Meeting in this work session to, sorry, give an idea to talk about the assessments. And that people, Superintendent, can you get this off?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, directors. Thanks for dedicating some time this evening in work session. This is intended to be learning opportunities. I mean, we are all interested in modeling those attributes of a good learning organization. If part of that means reviewing our performance indicators, student achievement outcomes. One pledge we've made to the board's affirmation of board goals, academic milestones in grades three, five, eight, post-secondary, is to give you along the way some progress monitoring indicators, share with you in terms as they occur, whether or not they're a formal board goal or not, any information that gives you a sense of sort of the pulse in the school system. And so tonight, we have a dedicated session. It's really going to focus on our fall assessment data. This is our MAP assessment data. It's published by NWA. So we do have some guest expertise here, team that works with us directly, and folks from the NWA office. Their national office is actually right across the bridge here in Portland. So we're thankful to have their expertise. If I could have them introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Mariah DeMers. I'm the accountant who's been working in Portland public for the past four years. I'm excited to be here.
Hi, everybody. I'm Nate Jensen, the director of one of the research teams at NWA.
So we appreciate having them, not just for our own internal conversations, but also as we dive deeper into the achievement of the assessment data, especially at the school level, help in interpreting and understanding what the data is telling us, it's invaluable to continue to have their technical assistance. So tonight, we're really going to dive into the fall assessment data. We were starting to have great conversations internally about sort of how do we interpret this? And then I anticipate that you're probably going to ask a lot of predictable questions that we are starting to ask of ourselves about what it might be telling us. And that's a great place, hopefully, objective for the night, is that we end up with a whole set of next layer of questions, because we want to keep providing more and more data and information that we can that gives us an accurate assessment of the district's capacity and work with impact on the goals that we have for our students. So taking the lead tonight is, thank goodness he's here, our chief of research assessment at NWA, Dr. Renard Adams, who I know has shared with you an initial slide deck before he dives into the map data, just because there's been a lot of questions around enrollment fluctuations, not just in Oregon, but here in PPS. He'll spend a little time on that. Then he'll walk you through the grade level by grade level, content by content, map assessment results. And just because we know that it will provoke a question around, well, how does PPS's performance compare, you know, compared to other districts, our urban districts around the country? So we have the benefit of the NWA who will also speak to that and what they're noticing across a sample set of six million students as well. So, Renard, all ears.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Directors, Student Representative Weinberg, and thank you for that great introduction, Superintendent Guerrero. I'm pleased to be with you tonight to go through one of our first regularly scheduled data dives. We'll be coming back and having these several times during the school year moving forward. The team and I will be happy to take any questions that you have at the end of the presentation. I'm having some technical difficulty. Can you hold on a second? Kara, I might need help.
I'm, because you're working at the Zoom meeting, but you want to be on here.
Okay.
Let's not advance. Could you put some of the Zoom screen right now, I think? Pull up Jessica.
I'm using PowerPoint. Do I need to use Google?
Nope. Just if you pull your PowerPoint to the front of it. So you can hide the Zoom. That's now? Okay, now you need to find the Zoom.
I gotta leave.
We can, we need to get over the conversation.
That's my, so that's, we have a book together. This is my book this month. And then this is the book I need to have.
Takes me out of it.
So you got to get ready tomorrow?
This is the first.
If you minimize the speed.
My wife.
Yeah. We need to pick a book for each other.
It's not, yeah.
You know, my sister has a really good, I hope to tell you about this. My sister has a really interesting, your sister Paul.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
It advances when I'm sharing the screen.
Are you doing fast enough?
I'm serious.
Hello? Can you get faster than that?
No, I cannot.
So you can share your screen and take it to the screen?
Right. And it was working perfectly.
If you want to do it. It's simple.
Kara, I'm going to leave the meeting and come back in. See if that helps.
Are you able to share it from there, Kara?
Can I send you the PowerPoint? The one you have on that was sent out this afternoon to the board will be, if you get advanced, that'd be important.
There are several things.
Okay.
Right next to this. Yeah, same time. Beyond.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know. Very much, very much. That's why I just, well, the whole issue today.
I was thinking of that.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was, I was.
You what?
I got a, I got a message from a.
I got a Zoom link from Kara earlier. I was in there and I tested it earlier. It said we're fine. I don't know what was happening yet.
His name, but he also pulls the students outside. And so I had to, I had to interact with those students further outside. Please try to talk to them. They don't talk to us.
Okay, I think we're ready to go again. So again, thank you for the opportunity to go through the fall data dives with you tonight. Kara, if I could have the next slide, please? In thinking about available data and what could be shared with board directors, we really have the following guiding questions. What is our current enrollment compared to last year's actual and this year's projected enrollment? What is the new baseline of performance for our students? And that's, of course, based on our fall MAP assessments. And finally, how did the class of 2021 perform on post-secondary indicators of college and career readiness? We know there's been a lot of interest in data, and I know you all have been waiting for me to get here to have a database conversation. So let's just dive right on in. Next slide, please. Let's begin with enrollment. Each October 1st, we count the number of students enrolled in PPS. If you could go back one. And these enrollment data are then shared with ODE and determine our state's share of student funding. As you're aware, as you are aware, enrollment drives revenue, which drives resources, both human and material, that we can allocate to school, buildings, and communities. While our October 1st enrollment has been publicly reported, we wanted to take a moment to look at some enrollment comparisons used by the district to determine resource allocation. Next slide, please. According to ODE's most recently published report, statewide student enrollment is down. There were 580-some thousand students enrolled in Oregon Public Schools on the first day of school of October 2019. And in October 2020, there were almost 22,000 fewer students enrolled. Prior to the pandemic, there had been a gradually slowing increase in the public school enrollment, but the pandemic conditions have led to a drop. PPS, like districts across the state and country, has also seen a decrease in enrollment since the onset of the pandemic. Next slide, please. There we go. Thank you. Annually, PPS partners with the Population Research Center at Portland State University in order to produce enrollment projections and forecasts for the next 14 years. The Population Resource Center has calculated our district enrollment projections since 1999. Projections account for changes in school configuration, like adding a new grade, new school or program, and it also accounts for neighborhood changes such as known housing development. When PPS meets enrollment projections, revenue and resources, including staffing, are in alignment, and no current or future adjustments are typically needed. However, when PPS enrollment does not meet projected enrollment, revenue can decrease and staffing and resource adjustments may occur based on the extent and magnitude of the difference between actual and projected enrollment. This slide shows grade bands K through five, six through eight, and grades nine through 12, as well as K-12 totals. 2020 actual enrollment, 2021 projected enrollment for this year, and 2021 actual October enrollment for this fall, as well as the differences between those are shown on the screen. As you can see, our 2021 actual enrollment is down as compared to both 2020 actual enrollment and the 2021 enrollment projection. While this decline is in keeping with statewide trends, PPS's decline in enrollment appears to be greater in magnitude than our neighboring districts based on conversations with the Population Research Center. Depending on our projected enrollment for fall 2022, revenue and resources may be impacted. So the question of interest is where are the students? And the answer is, we really don't know. They don't appear to be in our neighboring districts. They don't appear to be in the state. We're not sure where they've gone. If I could have the next slide, please? And so conclusions and takeaways, that our enrollment is down, as I shared. We are in discussion with the Research Center to understand and refine our enrollment projections, because we do staff based on projections. So we want to make sure those are as accurate as they can be moving forward. And the pandemic has caused fluctuations in the model that have led to the inaccuracies that we've experienced so far. So we want to see how much we can correct that. And then this idea that we may experience some revenue adjustments going into the next school year, depending on decisions that the state and ODE may make around revenue and funding. If I could have the next slide, please? Before we look at our fall assessment data, I would like to remind directors of the impact of COVID-19 and what it has had on data availability, especially our reading and mathematics map data. The chart on the screen shows the past three years and where we were and were not able to complete the MAP assessments. Prior to the school closures and the shift to distance learning in March 2020, we were able to complete the administration of the MAP assessments in each required window. During the 2021 school year, when instruction was virtual and in hybrid, we were only able to remotely administer the MAP assessments during the winter window only. This remote administration had a much lower student participation rate than the previous in-person assessment administrations. During the spring of 2021, assessments were canceled due to feedback and concerns stemming from the pandemic. The good news, though, this year, we've been able to assess students, because students are back in school for in-person instruction, and we've completed that testing. And while the pandemic has limited our ability to understand student growth and achievement in the past, this reopening gives us an opportunity to reset a baseline and move forward. If I could have the next slide, please? Establishing a new baseline is going to be critical as we move forward. Research and assessment organizations such as NWA, who are here with us tonight, and curriculum associates, the makers of iReady, have completed some research inquiries, and those were shared with board members previously. And for our purposes, we'll briefly examine some findings from our partners at NWA before diving into our fall assessment data. If I could have the next slide, please? So what might be expected? As I mentioned, NWA did research into student performance during the 1920 school year and the fall of 2021. The image on the slide shows some of this research. Beginning with the school closure in March 2020, we can see different levels of unfinished learning as depicted by the dotted lines between school closure and the last day of school. As we know, COVID-19 has differentially impacted students in their learning, and so multiple degrees of unfinished learning are depicted. The timeframe between the last day of school and the first day of school for the next school year demonstrates the typical summer slides that students experience. However, again, due to the differential levels of unfinished learning, the amount of summer slide is more or less pronounced for different students. And finally, when fall MAP assessments were administered at the start of the 2021 school year, some students tended to show lower student achievement as compared to their achievement prior to the onset of the pandemic. If I could have the next slide, please? NWA continued its research and examines student average RIT scores and growth for the 2021 school year shown by the dotted line compared to the 2019, excuse me, compared to the 2019, 2020 school year, which is shown with the dotted line. The 2021 school year is the solid line. Among their findings were, while students demonstrated growth, the growth was at a lower rate and the achievement was at a lower level than prior assessment windows. Student achievement at the end of virtual instruction during the 2020, 21 school year was lower than student achievement prior to the pandemic. In essence, students' performance had not yet been accelerated back to or above pre-pandemic levels. So this tells us that our focus on learning acceleration is exactly what we need to do, and is critical to our collective ability to accelerate our students back to where we expect them to be. Next slide, please? Now let's take a look at how we're currently achieving. We're going to start with reading and then go into map data. Right now, we have achievement data, because we only have one data point, because we're starting over with a new baseline. Once we've done the winter assessment, we'll be able to come back and talk about growth data. If I could have the next slide, please? In PPS, we assess reading performance for students in grades three through eight. We start with grade three, as this is a critical year for students in reading acquisition. We expect and want all students to be proficient by the end of their third grade year. Research tells us that students who are not reading proficiently in grade three or four times more likely to drop out of school prior to graduation. This is even more pronounced for Black and Latinx students, who, when not reading proficiently, are eight times as likely to drop out as compared to proficient readers. Reading is a gateway skill that makes all other learning possible, from complex texts to technical manuals, mathematics, real-world problems, and beyond. If I could have the next slide? First, we'll look at overall performance across the grade levels, and I want to talk a little bit about the RIT score, so we understand what we're talking about and what I'm mentioning in the data that you're seeing. So the MAP assessment produces what we call a RIT score, and it's a scale score. And RIT stands for Rouse Instructional Unit. The MAP trainers will also tell you that RIT stands for Ready for Instruction Today. And that unit is an equal interval unit, so you can do math with it. The difference between 190 and 191 is the same difference between 200 and 201. And so that makes you, makes you able to do, allows you to do computation, which is important. The average RIT score for each grade is shown in green, and then the target score for that grade level is shown by the yellow dot. So, for example, the RIT score value for each grade is shown at the base of the bar. So third grade reading has an average RIT score of 192 compared to an expected RIT score of 188. So this is good news. Overall, across grades three through eight and reading, despite the pandemic and its effect on student learning, our students are performing above, they're exceeding that expectation shown by the yellow dots. That said, when we disaggregate the data, a different achievement story will emerge. If I could have the next slide, please? For grade three reading, the expected level of student performance based on fall assessments is a RIT score of 188, which is shown by the yellow target line. All students, our Asian, multiracial, and white students, all either met or exceeded this expectation. Gaps exist, however, between our students of color and the expected level of achievement and their peers. As compared to the grade three fall normal level of achievement, Black and Native students' achievement was similar to the expected achievement at the fall or the beginning of second grade. Moreover, as a group, our underserved students of color demonstrated performance that would typically be expected during the winter or the middle of the second grade year. If I could add the next slide, and we look at grade four?
So half a year.
Half a year, yes.
Also, it looks like the yellow line isn't at 198.
It isn't. This is a rendering problem that happens when we turn it into PDF. If I could show you my beautiful PowerPoint, it would look a lot better.
Yeah, because I was like, 198, that's super close to 196 for 80. It looks like a huge gap.
I noticed that too, me too.
So in grade four, again, you'll see a similar pattern, author reading. The all-student group, the multiracial students, and the white students will exceed the expectation. And here in grade four, you'll note that those similar gaps exist, as we saw in grade three. Here in grade four, Black, Latinx, and Native students are demonstrating performance akin to what we would expect the fall of grade three. And underserved students of color are doing slightly better and demonstrate performance similar to the winter or the middle of the third grade year.
I have a quick question. On the underserved students of color, is that the same kids as Black and Latinx as well?
It's, it's all the students of color, together. Great question.
All together, okay.
Actually, sorry, can I ask a clarifying? When you say underserved students of color, is it all students of color? Because I thought it, I thought it only included subset of students of color that were historically.
My understanding is this is all students of color, but let me get back to you on that and send a message and find out. I'm sorry.
That's a good question.
The expected achievement, if we look at, if I could have the next slide, please? The expected achievement for the fall of grade five is a RIT score of 206. Again, the following student groups met or exceeded this expectation. All students, multiracial students, Asian and white students. Underserved students of color demonstrated performance similar to the fall of the fourth grade year, while Black, Latinx, and Native students' performance was similar to what we would expect during winter of the third grade.
So, so make sure I understand. So, the number for the Black kids, you're saying that, even though they're in the fifth grade, these numbers are basically what they were, what their act is at third grade?
Winter, middle of the third grade year, yes.
And so what we're seeing is the, the, the degree to which they're behind is compounding as they get older.
Yes, that is what we will see in what I'll highlight. What's also important, and I should have noticed this earlier, is the degree of difference becomes more magnified as the grade level increases.
Yes.
So a kindergarten student would be expected to make 16 or 17 points of growth in a year, where when you get to seventh or eighth grade, there's only four or three points of growth expected for the entire school year. So that for an entire group to be not performing by three, four, five, 10 points is a huge gap.
I saw that in the data. It seems to be, yeah, it's compounding.
It does. The gaps increase as the grade levels go up. So I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record, but I want to make sure we understand just how far away from expectations students are at each of the grade levels and in the subjects. If I could have the next slide, please? In grade six, again, we see that all students, Asian students, multiracial students, and white students met the expected RIT score with a score that was greater or equal to 211. Native students of color in this, Native students, excuse me, in this grade were closer to grade level performance than other students of color. Their performance was similar to winter of the fifth grade year. Underserved students of color and Latinx students demonstrated achievement similar to what we might expect in the spring of grade four. And our Black student achievement was the furthest from grade level expectations, but performance similar to the winter of the fourth grade.
Except English language learners.
Right, their, their performance is even a little lower.
I have a question about, so the gap, we see what the target is, we see what the actual score. Is the actual score an aggregate? And is it the average?
It's the average.
It's the average, okay.
If I could have the next slide, Kara, please? Thank you. In grade seven, a similar pattern emerges with the groups that we've already mentioned, meeting or exceeded the expected RIT. Here, our Black and Native students showed the greatest gaps in achievement, with performance more aligned with what we expect to see in fall of the fifth grade year. Our underserved students performed only slightly better with achievement similar to what is expected in winter of grade five. And finally, in grade eight, if I could have the next slide, Kara? Lastly, for reading in grade eight, Black students had the lowest level of achievement with an average RIT score that would typically be seen in winter of the fifth grade, and while underserved, Native, and Latinx students' achievement was in line with the expectations of the winter of grade six. As with other grade levels, here we see that the all-student group, Asian students, multiracial students, and white students met or exceeded the expected RIT with a score of 219. Next, we'll dig into math. Kara, if I could have the next slide? We assess math in grades two through eight. Mathematics provides an effective way of building mental discipline and encourages logical thinking, critical, logical reasoning, excuse me, critical thinking and problem solving. Analytical and reasoning skills are important because they help us solve problems and look for solutions. So ensuring that students can compute and reason in ways that demonstrate ongoing readiness toward college and career and our graduate portrait is critical to student success. If I could have the next slide, please? Overall, mathematics performance tells a slightly different story than reading performance, where in reading, each grade level met or exceeded the RIT. Here in math, only grade levels two and eight on average met the expectation, and all of the other grade levels approached but did not meet the expected RIT target. We'll disaggregate these data like we did with reading. If I could have the next slide, please? So we have an extra grade level here, because we're looking also at grade two. The target RIT for second grade in math is 177. On average here, the all-student group, Asian students, multiracial students, and white students exceeded this expectation, and all other students missed the target. Black students demonstrated performance that would be expected in the fall of first grade or one year below expectations. Latinx and underserved students of color demonstrated performance similar to what would be expected winter of first grade. And Native students' performance was similar to what would otherwise be expected in the spring of kindergarten. If we could look at the next slide? In grade three mathematics only, excuse me, in grade three, mathematics, only our white students met and exceeded the target expectation with a RIT score of 190. All students group, Asian and multiracial students approached this expectation but did not quite meet it. And that'll be a pattern going forward, where they're close but not quite there. In this grade, underserved students of color and Native students showed performance similar to what would be expected in fall of grade two. And Black students demonstrated on average performance that would be expected in the winter of the first grade or almost two years below what we would typically expect. If I could have the next slide? Grade four student group performance was similar to grade three, with only our white students exceeding the expected level of achievement and the other subgroups approaching that expectation but not making it. Here, underserved students of color, Latinx students, and students who identify as specific Islanders demonstrated performance on par with the spring of second grade, while Black and Native students were further below grade level expectations, with performance similar to what would be expected in the winter of second grade. If I could have the next slide, please, Kara? Here in grade five, we again see our white students exceeding the expected level of achievement with a RIT score of 210. And Asian students, all students and multiracial students, again, approaching but not meeting those expectations on average. For this grade level, Latinx students and underserved students of color both demonstrated achievement that is expected during the winter of grade three. Black students, Native students, and Pacific Islander students' performance was more similar to what would typically be expected in the fall of grade three. If I could have the next slide, please? Looking at grade six, the pattern continues unchanged. Again, our Asian students, all students and multiracial students are approaching that expectation. Here, our Latinx and underserved students of color showed achievement that would typically be expected in the beginning of the fourth grade year, while Black and Native students' achievement was furthest below grade level expectations with achievement that was typical of what we would see in the winter of third grade. If we could take a look at grade seven, Kara, please? We see slightly improved performance for some student groups, with Asian, multiracial, and white students exceeding the expected achievement, and the all-student group approaching that expected RIT performance of 221. Underserved students and Latinx students demonstrated achievement typically expected in the spring of grade four, and Native students demonstrated performance similar to achievement we would see in the winter of grade four. Black students, again, demonstrated the lowest achievement level with achievement similar to what we would expect at the beginning of the fourth grade year in the fall. And finally, for eighth grade mathematics. Again, Asian students, multiracial students, white students, and the all-student group met or exceeded the expectation level with a RIT score of at least 226. Here, our Native students showed higher levels of achievement. Here, our Native students showed higher levels of achievement and approached the expected RIT but didn't quite get there with achievement typically would be seen, which would be seen in the fall of seventh grade. Underserved, Latinx and black students showed on average lower achievement again. Latinx and underserved students of color demonstrated performance typically seen in the winter of grade five. And black students demonstrated the lowest achievement with a RIT of two oh six, which would typically be expected in the winter of fourth grade or nearly four years below grade level expectations.
Kind of just put a little placeholder in here, sorry. A little placeholder in here, you know, I don't know if you guys have had the opportunity to do this yet, but it'd be so interesting to look at the subgroups that have made disproportionate gains in one year. Because for the most part, we're seeing just uh, gaps compound over time. But then we're seeing certain subgroups in certain years making up for lost ground. Um, so it would be kind of interesting to, to see the extent to which we can identify influences or supports or investments that maybe ha- had something to do with that. So that's just something for later.
Yeah, I'd like to see like grade versus RIT score and then have different line graphs of the demographic groups. So we can see the like rate of improvement by each grade for each demographic.
Sure, so we need um, multiple data points to show you the trend line and we just have this one as our first baseline. And it's certainly something we can do in the future moving forward. Absolutely. If I could have the next slide please Kara. Um, it's our conclusion slide for this section. So in the aggregate, as um, we shared, reading achievement is exceeding that grade level expectation in the aggregate. Although those persistent gaps exist among our student groups. And math, um, the lower, excuse me, the math achievement was lower than grade level expectations in all grades except to an eight. And then our students of color show greater levels of unfinished and interrupted learning in reading and math. And they're often demonstrating achievement that's far below grade level expectations. Um, at this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Nate Jensen, Director of Research from NWA, to briefly share what they're seeing nationally in the data. Kara, if we could have the next slide. Or, and the next one, excuse me.
I'm just gonna, yeah, I need to back, back corner here, okay? That we're good?
We can hear you.
Okay, cool. Uh, so thank you for having me. I appreciate the time. I'm gonna try and be uh, read. Uh, one of the things I wanted to do is just share uh, three slides that draw from our national research that's set to be released online. Uh, and I chose these three slides to provide context uh, for what we're, what Dr. Adams just talked about. Sort of the big high level trends that are emerging in PPS. And how we might juxtapose those relative to what we see across the nation. So, uh, everything I'm gonna show you here is comparing where kids were in fall of nineteen compared to where kids are now. I'm taking a little bit different approach. So let me just unpack what you're seeing here on the slides just for a moment. So here we're showing overall shifts in reading and math. And if we could focus on the arrow on the left, there's kind of three pieces of information that I want to draw your attention to. The first is the top of the arrow, the circle at the top, which is, I realize, kind of hard to see here, but you have the slides in front of you, it's great. The circle represents where our achievement was in reading and third grade and in fall of nineteen. We're expressing everything uh, relative to our norms. So this is expressed in terms of achievement percentages. If you look at third grade reading, you can see third graders in reading in fall of nineteen were at about fifty to fifty percent. What I might characterize as slightly above average achievement. Nationally, what we've seen then in fall of twenty-one, there's a decline in achievement, about seven percentile points. That tip of the arrow tells us where kids are now in third grade reading. And that number below it tells, tells us what the shift in percentile looks like. So in third grade reading, we've seen the shift in fall nineteen from slightly above average achievement to slightly below. What I want to draw your attention to then is a couple of things. First, we see that uh, irrespective of grade, irrespective of subject, we see uh, declines in achievement uh, in fall nineteen compared to fall twenty-one. Fall twenty-one compared to fall. But what we also see is a much more notable impacts in math. And this is consistent with lots of different research on this topic that there's, appears to be clear impacts of pandemic that have hit harder, more so in mathematics than what we observe. Apparently consistent with what Dr. Adams talked about here. What I think is important though is to look uh, below the surface at some of these numbers. So next up slide please. I wanna present the same information, but just disaggregating between two groups of students. Uh, students in low poverty schools where less than twenty-five percent of students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Versus students in high poverty schools where seventy-five percent or more of students are eligible for free and reduced lunch. When we look at those two student groups, there's a couple of trends that become apparent. The first thing I would point out, if we're focusing on reading, is that if you remember that circle tells us where kids were in fall of nineteen. And if we look at the circles uh, in low poverty schools versus high poverty schools, you can already see that there is huge differences of achievement as of fall of nineteen. To the point where kids in low poverty schools were well above average achieving versus kids in high poverty schools were low, low average achieving. What makes this slide so important is when we look at the magnitude of declines for these two groups of students. And what we see is that students in high poverty schools showed much greater declines from fall nineteen and fall twenty-one than did students in low poverty schools. Certainly the impacts are more notable in math, but I'd also draw your attention to elementary school, especially in high poverty schools where we see the most substantive declines. As we look for areas of need, as we look for areas where greater uh, investment of resources are needed, this is one kind of clear call to action that we're seeing in our research. We don't need to elaborate, but the next slide please. I'll just put this up here as well. We also disaggregated our results by race and ethnicity with Asian students on the left and black students on the right. We presented this information this way to really underscore that these kids in fall nineteen were starting in a much different place with notable differences of achievement from left to right. And the declines in achievement have been much more heavily felt for students of Hispanic, or American Indian, or Hispanic Native and Black students. Or Southern or Latin American students. This to me is the other clear, clear call, uh, call to action. Uh, I said this this morning, but in our research, uh, we talk about how, in a world in which everyone wants to go back to normal, normal's not gonna be it. There's kind of clear calls to action here, uh, that as we think about how we're investing our resources, what we're focusing on, uh, there are clear patterns that are emerging that require our attention. So, uh, obviously we have more research to share. We'll share that on Monday. But just wanted to give you a brief, brief one, just to give you some context for what you're seeing here. Thanks, Dr. Adams.
Thank you, Dr. Jensen. Um, and as he mentioned, we know that we had gaps prior to the pandemic here in PPS. And we can only now begin to um, understand what those pandemic effects have done to those gaps as we move forward. Um, if I could have the next slide please.
Clarifying question. I wanna make sure that I'm understanding the data and I'm just sort of picking some. One of the aggregate, what takeaways for PPS is that reading achievement exceeds grade level expectations. And that this, this, when we disaggregate these serious gaps. From the national context, I see reading, you know, dropping across the board during pandemic. Is, is, is that also based off of grade level expectations? I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is, is PPS in aggregate doing better than nationally? Or we readjust our grade level expectations based on where we thought kids were gonna be as a result of pandemic? And you sort of said this is the beginning of the country.
So I don't take your stand of that. So NWA has a large um, sample of student performance data and their data link. I think it's somewhere between eleven to fifteen million students that are included in their nationwide sample. And so when we are comparing our third graders in reading to that RIT score, we're comparing them to the performance of those eleven to eleven to fifteen million students as the national average. And so you can say in the aggregate, we're exceeding in reading those national averages based on RIT score performance. What Dr. Jensen shared was percentile rank. And um, if you remember that, when you were in the eightieth percentile, it meant that you scored better than eighty percent of the students, you know, who similarly took the test. And he's showing that one of the ways we can look at what has happened to student achievement is look at the differences between the percentile ranks between those two years. Um, we did not do that in, for PPS data, uh, for tonight. But it is another way we can understand the impact of a pandemic on student achievement.
And just that, a bit of a, one of the things that we're working in PPS in collaboration is looking at those kind of questions like, uh, what trends do we see in PPS over time versus what trends do we see across the nation? We're gonna get context more, uh, how do you trend do we see here compared to, so we'll have more information. About PPS here.
Thank you. Let's talk about post-secondary readiness. This is, this is some good news. So, um, if we could have the next slide. This is of course a board goal, um, that we will move our underserved students of color from uh, fifty-three, fifty point three percent uh, of them meeting uh, post-secondary or demonstrating post-secondary readiness to fifty-six percent successfully completing one or more of those indicators. If we could have the next slide please. Just a reminder of the ways that, the various ways that students could indicate or demonstrate post-secondary readiness. They could successfully complete three or more placement courses, three or more IB courses, three or more dual credit courses, successful completion of a CTE pathway, which is two or more courses in the same path, or successful achieve attainment of the seal of biliteracy. So there are five different ways that can go into the aggregate performance of students here. Students can hit one of the indicators or two or three of them and each of those students will be considered to be ready for a post-secondary um, college or career. If I could have the next slide please. So the overall readiness is shown on the slide, um, for the classes of two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. The board goal of fifty-six percent is shown by the red line and the red call out. The good news is, um, our historically underserved students of color improved the percentage demonstrating post-secondary readiness with an increase of fourteen percentage points over the class of two thousand twenty. And in doing so, we've met the board goal a year prior to where, where we initially expected to meet that board goal. Um, this is great news, but we know we have more work to do. We also see increases above the board, across, almost across the board in all of the student groups. So in the aggregate, um, we're moving in the right direction in terms of post-secondary readiness. Again, we'll disaggregate this by uh, race and by the indicators of post-secondary readiness. So we can understand how each of those are looking. With these data, um, the question will become, what would be considered good? Good would be this chart with a hundred percent across the board for all the student groups. As we look at each of the individual components, um, good is then relative because we know students need to meet one of those components. And we know we don't have, for example, IB in all schools, um, we don't have programs everywhere. And so, um, you have multiple pathways, but not necessarily multiple um, equal access across the board to this data.
But, but to that point, I was just thinking about exactly that, which is this indicator is different than everything else we've looked at before. Because it's not just about achievement, it's also about access and opportunity and achievement.
Yes.
And so we can measure a considerable amount of progress in terms of providing those opportunities for our students, even though we're not there yet. So it's worth noting that that's, that's a course of a different color.
Um, if I could have the next slide please Kara. This is our, um, these are our data for AP pass rates. Despite the pandemic, our pass rates continue to increase for our underserved students of color, increasing by ten percentage points from a little over eleven percent to twenty-one point four percent between the classes of two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. Um, and there are also, these AP pass rates are increasing for all of our student groups, save our students with disabilities and our English learners. Um, where you don't see a data bar, um, that means that fewer than five percent of students met that indicator. And so the data are therefore suppressed.
So this slide speaks exactly to that point about access and opportunity.
And, and as will all the slides that come after this. Um, if I could have the next slide.
So these are not percent of people who could have accessed it, but it's all high school students.
This is actually the percent of the graduating class. So of that graduating class of the African-American students, what percentage of African-American students met the indicator of the AP course? Um, in IB, the percentage of underserved students of color passing IB was flat actually between two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one hovering around seven percent and decreased slightly by one percentage point for all students combined. I'm gonna note, you'll note the student groups that don't necessarily have data for one or more years.
I'm curious, if you had a bar that, uh, was like taking the course versus passing it, would we see like a big increase in those taking the courses? Or are we having more kids, same number of kids taking class but more passing?
I think, I don't wanna speculate without actually looking at the data, but I will share what I've seen nationally and talking to the college board about this. Um, what we often see is students will enroll in the class and then sometimes they'll drop the class. Sometimes they'll finish the class, but they won't take the exam. Um, we see that happening more likely and more often with students of color. So we would have to do our own examination and I haven't done that, the team and I haven't done that for our data.
Yeah, it'd be interesting just, I mean, it's a great, I'm glad to see the increase. It'd be great to see like, are we getting a lot more students in and therefore, or, or are we the same number of students but having more success? And then if we even have more students in, see the numbers go up.
Um, if I could have the next slide please Kara. Thank you. Um, our data are slightly better for CTE uh, career pathway completion. Here, our historically underserved students increased in the completion of CTE pathways by almost nine percentage point, eight point four percentage points. Up from twenty point nine, up to twenty point nine from twelve point five the prior year. For this indicator, all student groups showed increased performance as compared to nineteen, twenty, though gaps are still persistent as you can see on the screen. Uh, if I could have the next slide, if we could look at dual credit course passing.
Before you move on, also the board made a decision uh, of defining post-secondary readiness for CTE as two or more classes. But we also know that that is actually fluctuating. Do you want to say something about that, a big change?
OBE is tweaking the requirement for completion of a path, a program of studies for CTE from two courses. How we've been measuring to three courses starting next school year. So, um, we, um, as a group, as a collective, I wanna also consider adjusting our board goal to match the state requirement.
Sort of needing to be iterative as, you know, information evolves. Uh, the good thing is our CTE programming has continued to evolve. You're seeing growth there for students that are choosing this pathway. Uh, showing some, some nice growth.
Thank you, Dr. Amat. Have a look. Um, for dual credit course pass rates, um, those increased for our, for our underserved students of color, improving by four point three percentage points from fourteen point three to eighteen point six percent across the school years. The performance of all students however just decreased slightly, likely due to, to decreased performance on this particular indicator by our Asian, Native and white students as well as students with disabilities. So we had a number of groups that went down and that likely um, caused um, some decrease in the all student group. And finally, for post-secondary readiness, if I could have the next slide. We know that biliteracy is an asset in today's global society. And for this indicator, our underserved students of color improved by almost ten percentage points from nineteen, twenty to two thousand twenty-one. Most recent performance saw twenty-seven point three percent of underserved students earning the seal, up from seventeen point five percent the prior year. That said, and here again, we see those gaps. Um, and if we see an indicator where fewer than five percent of our black, Native or Pacific Islanders students actually earned the seal. So in conclusion, for post-secondary readiness, if I could have the next slide. We can see that our underserved students are making progress and that's good news. Um, we met and exceeded the board goal a year um, earlier than we anticipated. That's also good news. And we also see, um, to your point director, at, issues with access and opportunity. And so we see that for certain indicators, additional supports and access are needed for black, Native and Pacific Islander students. Those indicators include AP pass rate, IB pass rate and the seal of biliteracy. And then for all indicators except CT pathway completion, we need additional supports and increased access for students with disabilities and our English learners. If I could have the next slide. This concludes our fall data dive. Uh, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. Um, it's been my pleasure and at this time, myself uh, and the team are ready to take any questions you might have. Or engage in any discussion you'd like, you might like to throw at the class.
So my first question would be around, you know, we have, we've just seen the impact from nineteen, twenty to twenty, twenty-one. But we also know that we from nineteen, twenty to twenty, twenty-one, but we also know that we have had a persistent achievement gap for a long time, and we've had a range of our students who have not been meeting benchmarks across grade levels for a long time. So even just anecdotally, can you kind of discuss that trend over the grade levels and the decrease from last year to this year relative to the trends that we've seen in, you know, five years ago or something?
Well, we didn't display that tonight, so I don't want to speculate, but what we anticipate is, again, greater decreases in math than in reading. We knew and know that we have a math problem, that's why we've done a curriculum adoption, and Dr. Proctor continues down that road. And so what we might anticipate, and what we know, is that we need to probably change some practices because for our students who are behind to catch up, we need to accelerate their learning, right? So simply meeting your growth target every year on math is not going to cut it. You need to exceed your growth target year after year in order to catch up to your peers that are performing on a great level when you are not. And so I don't want to speculate. If you, you know, I want to beg your pardon and not particularly speculate, but I'm happy to do those types of analyses and bring those back once we have growth data in the winter for the next Data Dive.
I have a couple of questions. One was about the methodology with the Population Research. I was curious about the fidelity of the projections. I know it's a projection, but those projections are dependent on, you know, humans inputting inputs in the system, and so I'm wondering what, how that is going to be resolved. And then also, I'm curious what the, that loss of enrollment, what does that mean in terms of our, our overall test scores and?
Okay, let me start with your first question.
I'm guessing I'm hypothesizing that if we have higher income students leaving the district, I'm just curious what the impact of that would be, of our overall?
Or do we know the demographics, or do we know?
Decide the demographic of our?
I don't have the disaggregated demographics of the students who are no longer here tonight, but I can certainly work with the superintendent to provide that to you at a future meeting. So let's not necessarily speculate on that at the moment. We know that if you take an average and you take a bunch of hundreds and nineties out of the average, the average tends to fall.
That's what I was kind of getting at. I was wondering if we had any guesses as to how that would impacting, like, numerically?
Sure, let's take a look at that. To your first question, Chair DePass, the pandemic has caused a lot of volatility?
Volatility, yeah.
Volatility, thank you.
Yes.
And the projections.
Yes.
So the idea that students are moving in ways that they had not historically, because the projection is based on past performance, right? You build a steady trend of what's going to happen based on what has happened for the past several years. And once the pandemic hit and students, we lost contact with students, we don't have them enrolled, or they're withdrawn, we don't know where they've gone, they're not showing up in partner districts, so we can't really travel where they are, that just really caused challenges with the projection. And so one of the things we're doing is still providing all of the demographic information we can to the Population Research Center. In addition, they are trying to combine that with data that they're understanding from neighboring districts to try to make a more conservative projection moving forward until such time as the model stabilizes, because we're still in the pandemic.
Yeah, yeah. I sense that people are leaving the district because housing costs are high here, and I mean, just anecdotally, people are moving to cities that have a high, a lower cost of living, and because, you know, in some professions, you can work from anywhere. And so I feel like that's part of a trend of leaving, is that people are realizing I can, I can work from the beach, or I can work from a smaller town.
Very well could be.
And I'm just curious if we consider, if the Population Research Center considers housing costs and the availability of housing here in Portland, which is, it's a very tight market right now, so.
Let me investigate that, and I can get back to you, because I'm not sure.
I think they might be in a.
I don't want to misspeak. I saw Jackson saying?
Yeah. One of the, I guess, like limitations of winter twenty, twenty was the, like, limited number of data points that we, or was it?
Winter?
Twenty-one, yes.
Twenty-one.
We had limited data points, and we had to extrapolate that data. So what were the percentage participation in this fall?
So this, this fall, excuse me, great question. Participation this time around was about ninety percent in reading and close to ninety percent in math. And that winter administration, the participation rate was a little higher than sixty-five, sixty-seven percent. So it's been greatly improved. In-person instruction, when you're in-person, it's much easier to make sure students are taking the assessment to carve out that time, instructionally, that forty-five or fifty-minute window that you need, and ensuring that that can happen remotely is, was challenged.
Was it ninety percent across demographic groups?
No, it varies, but I don't have that with me, but I can tell you that it varies. It varies by school. We will be providing to the regional superintendents data that they can then understand similarly about their particular schools.
This is maybe not a question for you, Dr. Adams, but it's based on your data. This is maybe a question for Dr. Proctor and Superintendent Farrow. The, looking at the achievement numbers, not only are they track historically Black and Native students having, you know, in some cases, a single digits into a grade level, and actually further, the question is, like, do our, in a year in which we have more resources than we've probably ever had, are we flooding the, are we flooding those schools where those students are with both the social-emotional supports, but also the academic supports? Or are we, is this year going to just be that trend line is that trend line, and next year's like a reset, or we have, you know, summer academies with extended learning? I guess it's like, what are we doing to, you know, there was a big inflection point, but in the wrong way, because of the pandemic, it's like, are we doing something to move the inflection point measurably versus just continuing to?
Yeah, that's, that's an essential question. I appreciate it. I'll start. Team, to jump in, Dr. Bird, even, Dr. Proctor, around the implications for, you saw it in the NWA data, right? There was already gaps in circles, which only amplified during the pandemic. So the question for school systems and for PPS is, we haven't had all of our student groups pack great load of expectation, and now we have to more ground cover. And so you started to see over the last couple of years, more equipment is used, resources, whether that's staffing, our students' current support, or partners in our CSI, TSI schools, and there's been some support plans in place. How do we continue to sort of ramp that up? We have some one-time monies right now to really address the issues that are becoming evident for us. You'll hear about some of that as we go into budget development season after the winter break, but I'll invite team to talk about some of the work that we're doing, because it's, these are essential questions for our school-based instructional leadership teams, for our principal supervisors, and for us centrally to think about, what are the levers that are, that are high leverage, that are going to sort of disrupt this pattern and make up ground so that more and more students are at grade levels?
Yeah, so in building a plan to earmark specific funds to address these gaps that we find, we, of course, brought in more resources into CSI schools, staff support on the school's implementation of their school improvement plan. Many of the CSI schools are also engaged in a deep work with UVA in addition. And we've also identified a director for learning acceleration. With that work, through learning acceleration, for example, we are engaging in high, high, high quality or intensive tutoring for students in addition to Saturday programs and after-school programs to help support and bridge, build additional programming to support students in bridging those gaps that were, you know, of course, impacted, that you see in data as a result of COVID and being absent from school and being away from the direct teaching that is necessary for students to really perform and to thrive in a learning environment. So we definitely have looked at that. In addition to, in our high school space, we have identified and continue to work with student success teams in the high school space to have conversations about specific students and where there are gaps in their performance and how we can provide, again, additional support for them. So there has been a plan that has been laid out, how to use those resources, those additional resources, that in this particular year, coming back to face-to-face learning, to support the students, and we'll continue to analyze data and analyze our programming, right? So part of what we are also doing is, you know, if you look at the data and look at where we are, as it was noted, that we have a math curriculum adoption that has happened this year, and also curriculum adoption for pre-K two for foundational skills. And we have to continue to track the implementation of it and track the student outcomes as a result, while at the same time, we continue to engage in deep curriculum adoption across other content areas and grade levels for our, our system to really be, to provide the resources for teachers to have a grade level, high-quality grade level curriculum and resources to use in classroom as well, where that has been a missing for a number of years here at PPS. And as you can see, without strong, high-quality and aligned curriculum, we're then unable to meet some of these targets. So these are some of the things that we have in place, and that we'll continue to do and then track the data along the way so that we can continue to make adjustments for those students, all students.
Can I just recap that? So across the board, we're doing some foundational things, like the math curriculum, even if you're at a high achieving school, or a TSI or CSI school, that's going to benefit everybody.
Absolutely.
And then layer over that, we have targeted accelerants. Sure. The tutoring, the extended year, extended day. Does every, our focused students, our Black and Native students, every single one of them have access to that?
They will, absolutely. It will be offered. What we're doing, for example, with our summer, summer program is another element, is ensuring that there are regional hubs across our city so that we can service all students, and we make it available to, to, to our under, you know, our under, you know, performing students who need to have some skill development and to bridge some of the learning gaps.
Regardless of whether their own school is flooded with it or not, they can, regardless of whether their own school is flooded with it or not, they can still have access, you know, individuals can have access through those.
Yes, yes, yeah.
No, the thing that principals in our CSI schools talk about all the time is just the increased support and investment with our partners in all kinds of ways, from explicitly academic support to family support, social-emotional support, and all that, that's a much higher level.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we really invest deeply, even in the SEL work, and, you know, that all of that is like the wraparound for ensuring that our students are really ready for learning, and that we're able to, you know, for example, in the pre-K eight space, we have our schools that are engaging in morning meetings and, and having these, you know, dialogues, circles, dialogues with students so that they can, you know, I call it unpacking, you know, their backpack emotionally before entering into the learning space so that they can engage deeply with their teachers and with their lessons.
So in addition to additional staffing, APs, interventionists, TOSA access, the cohort model, the technical systems, UVA and others, you know, in order to make up those unfinished instruction or learning time, this is why you saw one of the deepest summer operating catalogs ever in history's district, and we'll need to continue that.
Absolutely.
Going into the coming summer, on top of our five R E S J strategies, your mentorship and wraparounds, case management, and we do want to get to the point to where we can be as exact as possible about making sure every student has the kind of supports and wraparounds that they'll have. So we had a big conversation this morning, and just to kick off, you know, how does that inform the strategy, who are we going to want to resource moving forward to make sure that we're really addressing that? So I know the director is probably already going to be fully disaccountable to, how is this going to help move the needle where we most need to?
And I'll add, I think, one of the through lines through that is to Superintendent Gavettos' point around leveraging one-time monies. So there's just this, like, real conversation that we had about building capacity, enhancing our capacity, and supporting with community feedback as well. So as we think about what the next two years are going to look like for our ESTER funding, so we have these federal dollars, we know that summer school was very successful, and there's like an opportunity to continue to roll that out, so putting a stake in the ground around summer school funding. And then to Dr. Proctor's point around wraparound supports or high dosage tutoring, how do we continue to roll that through thoughtfully, knowing that we have these one-time funds that, what we do thereafter come fiscal year twenty-four? So it's, it's laying out a long-term plan that would be very thoughtful and immediate impact, but those are some of the upcoming conversations we'll continue.
Somebody else had a question. So I have a question in response to that. So with low enrollment that we're seeing and the one-time funding that we're giving, how sustainable are the implementations that we're putting, have we put in place? Last one. Next question is, what plan do you have in place if and when funding decreases for the district, whether it be to go enrollment or state, where it means there's more? What plan do you have in place?
So the biggest anchor in our plan is going to be Forward Together. It's going to be our strategic plan and how we're aligning our resources to that, and at the same time, we'll be leveraging the ESTER funding that we have, so our federal relief dollars, to help cushion as we go through the next few years. There will be just some natural adjustments based on our staffing plan, less students, naturally, like some staffing adjustments that will happen by default, but also just understanding what are those fiscal levers that we need to be mindful of, from how are we leveraging existing resources to support a specific goal? So whether that goal is continuing summer school every summer. So if you say summer school is going to look like A, B, C, and this is something we're going to do moving forward, how do we help build, how do we use the ESTER dollars to get us in a place to continue using our regular or traditional funds to continue that work? Now, the reality is, is there also will be trade-off conversations in understanding how does this program, this initiative, support the strategic plan? So one of the, it's a pie, not a well, right? So as we've been communicating and putting like the tone in place, right? It's like, what are the things that we're going to be focusing on? And keeping in mind, our resources are a pie, not a well. And what then do we put our focus in, but then also leverage our ESTER funding to just continue to enhance that, knowing that in two years, there is a fiscal cliff, right? Because that money goes away. So how does that fiscal cliff end up being a two-foot drop versus a thirty-thousand-foot drop? And so these are just ongoing conversations. It's not like having a set, what's this going to look like? We don't know where the state's going to be in another year or the next biennial as well. So there's like all these factors that come into play, but that's also what moves us to have these trade-off conversations, assessing how we're aligning to our strategic plan.
And then there are some investments that have long-term that, like professional development.
Yes, that, that isn't a perfect example of building capacity. So it's like investing in professional development, because then that continues to pay off. And so is that upfront investment that then gets us going for the next few years? Or hopefully for infinity.
So can we talk about like the district strategy that's coming into place? And I know this is a kind of hypothetical question, but how long are we looking for all the things that we're putting in place to start seeing a positive result? Because historically, it's just been going in the opposite direction. Because historically, it's just been going in the opposite direction.
And the key to that is going to be the outcome. So in our strategic plan, we have our goals and our outcomes. And one of the things that we're doing is identifying which ones are we going to focus on as we get through? Because it, it, as, as we all should, we should always raise a bar. Just like we want to raise a bar for our students, we should be raising the bar for ourselves and how we push the work forward. And part of that is understanding the sequencing of that strategic plan. So based on, are we going to be focusing on, I think the one that selfishly comes to mind is, is thinking about a, a strategic deployment office? Or thinking about like a, a core team that's going to focus on the strategic outcomes and delivering or keeping track of the strategy? So as, as Dr. Adams' teams continue to put all the information together, how are we keeping track of that data to keep us accountable for the results? And so as an example, as, as we think about our internal resources, how do we then put ourselves in a position to continue through with the rest of the plan? And so if we're looking at data from our summer programs, how then do we continue to tweak to achieve and continue that work? And so as team continues to assess what are the outcomes that we want to focus on for the next year? And then so forth, and, and continue to build on that? It's, it's going to be, it, it's not going to be a set like this is it, but it's going to be the continued evolution of our strategic plan based on the outcomes that we, that we initiated with first.
Okay, so I'm, I kind of, you understand, but when you, usually, so when we implement something at our, at our company, we have a outcome point to say, okay, we should get this outcome. If we implement this today, so that's not what I'm looking at now. It's like, with the stuff that we're implementing today, what timeframe are we looking for some kind of outcome for our students to, to move from?
I, I will, I think Dr. Adams wants to show a time in. I, I, but one thing I, I will add is as conversation, for example, is board goals. So when we're thinking about reading, math proficiency, it's not thinking so much about it from a time-bound perspective, but like the principal conversations we've been having is around, how do we start looking at our resources to start having that engagement conversation based on what's happening at our schools to achieve those goals? And, and I don't know, Dr. Renard, if, if, or Dr. Adams?
I'm used to that. A lot of people are saying that whenever it's with them, it's fine. What I would offer Director Hollins is there are many, our research and education tells us that there are many different inputs that are happening that go into student achievement and student outcomes. You need a guaranteed and viable curriculum. You need a certified, highly qualified and highly effective teacher. You need facilities that are welcoming and inviting and make students feel comfortable. And so what I would offer is we have, in my, being new, I think we have lots to still examine to understand which might be the biggest levers that we then want to really push the handles down on to figure out how to get the outcomes that we all want for our students as quickly as we can. We need ongoing professional support. There are just so many different things. And I think we have to wrestle with what are those high-leverage activities that we can do? What are the low-leverage, low outcome activities we can stop doing? And how do we then obtain the outcomes for students that we want? It takes change, takes time. And, you know, an organization like this is the Titanic, not a speedboat. And so we don't necessarily turn those corners as quickly as you would often like to, but you can turn the corner with time and the, and the appropriate effort.
Do we anticipate a time frame that we're looking to steer the Titanic in a different direction? I guess I'm, I'm looking at it as a parent, right? If I have a second grade kid coming into the school district and, and a, a black kid, and I see the numbers that, that's there, am I waiting 10 years for this stuff to happen? Am I waiting five years for, for the, the, the switch?
Right.
I mean, what, what am I looking at?
So, so how I want to, you know, answer that for you, Director Hollins, is, you know, there is, there, there are two ways of looking at it. Yes, that we are a ship and we do need time. There's, it's going to take a lot of inputs and such. One of the greatest inputs and levers that occur, two of them specifically, to increase student learning is curriculum, high-quality curriculum, and high-quality teacher practices, right? And every day, teaching and learning should be occurring in every single school in our system. And every week or every couple of weeks, the good teacher, high-quality teacher is going to make some measure of assessment to see if students are learning and growing in, in his or her environment. So while we are working, just because of, you could look at it of broad scale and then as, you know, to address the parent in all of us, say that, you know, we are in the process of curriculum adoption. We are in the process of ensuring that students have access to high-quality curriculum. And we are in the process of shifting some practices that we have seen trending in the classroom that, that with improvement can improve student outcomes. So it could be, right? As far as the scale for the organizational shift, it will take, right? Anyone who knows change management will tell you that it takes anywhere from three, five years to even start seeing that large-scale shift. But if we, if we keep an eye and we support our schools and our, our leaders in schools on how to keep an eye on the day-to-day practices and instruction within the classroom, there is no reason that we, we can't get to every child within a shorter period of time, whether it be a year, with year over year with improved practice and improved curriculum.
Can I, can I pick up on that line? Because I, I mean, Director Hollins, your question is, is getting at, but I think we're all, and I think it's exciting, every single person in this room wants to see the student achievement grow, particularly these gaps, as quickly as we can. If it's six months, that's great. If we can only do it in four or five years, let's start moving towards that. I think the inherent tension that we're seeing, and we always will see this, you know, staff are going to justify at least, you know, not set expectations unreasonably high, right? And this is true with any performance management exercise. We want to set stretch goals that we can achieve, not attainable goals that we're going to fail to achieve. What I'm hearing, which I think is good for us as board members to hear, is look, some of this stuff is going to take a lot of time. And I think the, the tension and what I hope we continue to have as a conversation is, as board members, we're going to be pushing to say, can we do it faster? Can we do it faster? And I think the, the response from the superintendent and you all is, well, first of all, there's a resource constraint, it's a pie, right? And then even if we can do additional resources, there's a point where it's still going to take time. I mean, even if, you know, with the 10, 20, 30 million dollars.
To scale, right.
It's going to take time to scale. And so I think it's incumbent on us to push really hard for that accountability and also be realistic with the public in terms of what, what we can achieve. And I think that's, it's, it's going to be the inherent tension of the conversation. But, but I, I love your question because we keep asking it every time. I, we ask it every quarter, right? What are we doing this week to move this forward?
Right.
No, I definitely appreciate your question. If we could stay on that question and focus our intentional efforts, I think we'll see short-term wins while we build for long-term success.
Sure.
And we've already seen in this district, when we're focused, when we stay on a high school student success plan, we're building out our CTE programs, we saw the data fantastic in post-secondary reading. And we're on the right track, we're seeing some nice growth, and we want to maintain that trajectory. When we, when we see what's happening in early education, when we see what's happening in our foundational literacy work. I mean, the reading data stayed in a pretty good place. So we must have been doing some work there and, and we have lots for to go. But does that have anything to do with the first dose of a lot of our PE was focused on foundations in reading and science of reading, dyslexia? And we saw lots of that work being pushed out, maybe that factored in. I don't think it's any one lever. I think it is a combination of the inputs. I think what we have to ask ourselves is, as we, as we build up capacity across the organization and the system, what's the concerted, more focused attention we're going to give students and the schools that are at where we know they need the benefit of acceleration, more interventions, more supports, more time, and continue to sort of be equitable when we have this support?
And I love the idea, as you talk about focusing in on the problems to make them manageable, right? And thinking back to, you know, homelessness is, is sort of an unsolvable problem, but veterans homelessness, when the federal government said this is going to be prioritized, they took a whole bunch of money in, they told Shafin County, you got to focus on it. All of a sudden, they saw veterans homelessness in these areas. And, you know, and I think it's the same thing when we talk about black student achievement, it feels almost, you know, like, wow, how are we going to get around that? Could you talk about the 10 black students at this school who are, you know, not reading at grade level? And how do we bring them up to grade level and all of a sudden it feels more manageable? And I know that's what you've been doing, I mean, it's like, right? Is, is sort of how do we get the resources to those schools? How do we get the focus on it? I think the more we break it down into those manageable pieces, the, that we can see that result.
And, and it's those cycles of continuous improvement, those plan, do, study, act conversations. Our principal supervisors are having their kind of marks of schools. Let's, let's pull out our improvement plans. There's data now that we have this baseline. Do we still think these are the right action steps? We should be putting our attention on, you know, it's, it's a constant conversation. How do we make adjustments and fine tune? And what are we learning from schools that, when we disaggregate by school site, that are showing actually some admirable gains? What is it that they're doing on those campuses that we might learn from those best practices around? So this is why professional learning community time is important for our teachers to have opportunities to do learning walks, for our principals to be engaged in instructional rounds, for us to be engaged with partners out there like UVA to sort of support or provide technical assistance, refine our leaders' lenses, so that they're giving guidance and feedback to our educators. So we're all calibrated around what we think high-quality, effective instruction looks like and that the evidence is always on what the students are demonstrating that they learned. That, that has to be sort of the measure, our students learning, which, what does it look like when it's at grade level? Yes, we have to, you know, we have to scaffold from where students are at, but we also have to provide grade-level content.
Absolutely.
And so sometimes we should forget that, you know, that there's that, there's, there may be some extra work that we need to do there. But as you saw, we have some student groups that are more than a grade level behind. That doesn't mean they don't get the grade level that they're in or the content. We just have to put it in an accessible, comprehensible way for them. Whether they're a student group below grade level or an English learner or a student with disabilities, they're all entitled to that kind of access.
Which sounds so eminently sensible, but, but two years ago, we didn't have that. We did not have that across our, our district. Universal, standards-based, aligned, pushing up.
I want to let Director Hollins know I asked the exact same question. I put it in context of Bradley. At what point do we start to see that curve, the growth curve dramatically?
And it is a curve that's hopefully goes steep. It's not a linear line, nor a thesis, it's not a diagonal, it's, it's this. But if we stay focused, and when we do, we see, we see visible improvements.
I'm going to ask my, my last question. So as a board or, or a board member, what can we do to assist this process?
When we stay focused on student achievement, keep doing thing, doing thing.
Yeah.
And you expect to see the growth that I think that we all feel under urgency.
One of the things I'm going to just say about you, but let's, we're, we're, looking through the charts, it's also a little bit dangerous because if you look at one point, it's like, hey, we're, we're actually doing okay. And it's because that's when we're looking at the averages. And it's like, this is like the myth of Portland, like we're above average because, you know, frankly, we have a lot of white, no class students and those students are masking discrepancies. So I say, when I, when the slides start, it's like, oh, hey, this is actually not bad. And then it's like, oh, you know, because then you get way from that. What would be helpful for me is to see the, not just the percentage, but the number of students there. Because if you look at it, it's like two bars actually mask all this other levels of the achievement gaps because of just the demographics of our district. So it would be really helpful to have by, you know, by bar, how many students there is. Because I, I think that allows this sort of intensity of focus versus like, hey, we're actually above average. But we're, but that gives us distracted, I think, from, or unfocused from what we really need to focus on, which is, how many are there and where are they? And are we applying to these best, maximized resources? The most experienced, the most experienced principals in those schools and all the other things that make it happen.
Do we know, I looked at the reading data and while in aggregate, it tells a nice story, I think once I started disaggregating, I thought, what should these bars look like if we were teaching our black and brown students to read at grade-level expectation? How much higher should those bars be if we're actually meeting the promise of that free, appropriate public education for all of our students?
Not to measure all, all the other aspects of our, our vision and what we want for our children that are being impeded because they're, we're not setting them up to succeed in their most fundamental proficiencies, you know? All those other things in terms of realizing their whole self.
Dr. Adams, you know, talking about whole setting, you and I talked about this earlier. We have this, we have a data point. We're going to get additional data point with the, with the winter mass testing. At, at what point, we, we have board goals we adopted two years ago that are actually through the 2220, sorry, 2122 school year at the end of this. But we, we sort of acknowledge to the board the need to reset that baseline that you talked about tonight. So when, when will we have the data needed to reset that baseline and start talking about, you know, these questions of how quickly can it, can it begin? 2%, 5%, 10%?
What I would say is I believe we'd be able to have that conversation in the spring. We need to have the winter data, look at our trajectory from this fall to this winter compared to some past trajectories when we, that were perhaps in place based on past data when the board accepted and voted on and approved those goals. That will give us an idea, sort of like the NWA chart where it had the two lines of trajectory. One was solid and one was dotted. That'll give us an idea around how much we need to adjust. I'm also going to lean heavily on our partners at NWA who have so much knowledge and, and have so much support to offer in terms of helping us set those targets that are rigorous and yet attainable for the district and for students. Let's bring.
I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but it's exactly the question that school boards around the country are wrestling with, right? My colleagues say, well, there's been this disruption, so how do we recalibrate? What, what makes for an ambitious stretch model still? But thankfully, we have a resource here where the trajectory can be informative to that question.
We talked before about having a session with our head of learning acceleration to see what we can understand about the relationship between some of our investments and the assessments of our kids so that, you know, which is really critical information that we need for our budget process so that we know what to, what to double down on to really have an impact on, on student achievement. So I hope that we do still have that conversation.
Yeah, we're already starting to think about it because there's the, there's the academic need, there's the social emotional need, I think, you know, help keep a lot of our kids safe this past summer as well. So, so those, those are all sort of benefits that we think are very terrible if that continues.
I, I mean, I have to also say, like, that was one of my questions too, Director Hollins. This is just such an extraordinary year. I think your question or your comment about safety, like we have to kind of triage right now, like how you can keep kids safe, you know, teachers safe and them. It's not what I want to focus on necessarily. I'd like to focus on that, those gaps. It's kind of like what's on first?
Heavy on our hearts.
It's, yeah, it's heavy on our hearts and it's just, it's stressful when you, you know, open a newspaper or still read newspapers, something like that, right? Yeah, it's tri, it's triage. It feels like it's, it feels like a, that would be.
The conditions have certainly changed and we'll need to also, the good thing is, we were having these conversations during our student investment account development. And thankfully, we had some of the resources that maybe other districts hadn't anticipated as something a district should be equipped with. So we actually ended up in a pretty good place compared. So we actually ended up in a pretty good place, uh, comparing speaking, but we want to look at those too, which would improve really valuable and where do we need to sort of expand on some of those efforts to be students readiness to learn, uh, challenges as well as the academic interventions and acceleration that we want to see. So, so yes, you can of course look forward to, as we gather internally and bring in school-based, uh, leaders in these conversations after the break to start to formulate, you know, not only what aspects of our strategic plan are we going to prioritize in sequence to get at some of those short-term wins? Uh, how do we stay on this journey to build overall capacity? Uh, and then what are some more immediate needs of this pandemic, this, you know, and how do we leverage the, the various funding revenue streams, including the ones that are temporary that maybe can help us build capacity?
I mean, as, as stressful as this time is right now, also I think, um, I see through to some, some opportunities. And as difficult as it is, I, I do see some opportunities to reform, you know, even how we're thinking about how we're problem solving. You know, um, our problem solving hasn't gotten, we're solved, it hasn't solved problems that's over.
And as challenging as it is to think about the work ahead of us, like we have an amazing team. Thank you guys. I thank you both for your leadership. Your big night of fun and it's worked.
Well, this is intended to be an ongoing series, looking at a myriad of indicators. This one is obviously, we're very curious to see what our fall assessment needs to look like. There's a number of other areas we want to look at. They might not be board goal related, but they definitely tell us something about the inputs of the investments, you know, we're at those. So I think you look forward to, you know, how we, how we schedule the future sessions on some of those topics. And then we'll come back to these charts after the winter assessment. Dr. Renard?
Is there anything else, Director?
Anything further?
No, I think.
I, I just want to say I know that this information is hard to hear. Um, it's not hard to say and speak, I mean, it is hard to say and speak to. And I knew I would be taking the air out of the room with this presentation tonight. Um, and so, but what I know from my work in previous districts, it is possible to close gaps. I, I worked in a system where we closed the gap in graduation rate between black and white students. You know, when we, um, have school improvement plans that focus on student achievement and student belonging, and we have staff focused on two to three things that they need to improve professionally in their practice with appropriate curriculum supports and P D, we will see the results we want to see. We'll get there.
All right, we can hold you to that.
Hold us to, luckily, it's all of us together. We hold each other, we hold each other into a day. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.